Have you all here with us this evening? We are absolutely delighted this evening to have our Shambly 101 class with us. It's my cue to our council to be on your best behavior. Show them how it's really done, not how we do it. But welcome, welcome to our Shambly 101 class. We are thrilled to have you all here with us this evening. I think most of us up here on this floor have been through Shambly 101. It was one of the first things I did before running for council. And you know, it helped me a lot, helped me learn a lot about the city and city government, and has helped me a lot as a council member and as a mayor to understand the process. So we are so glad to have you all with us this evening. We are going to move right into our public hearings this evening. It's always the first item on our agenda on work sessions. And I will read the rules of order for the public hearing zoning matters. The hearing shall be presided over by the mayor. After calling the hearing to order, the mayor shall request that the parcels of property which are subject to the zoning proposal be identified and read. Following such identification and reading, the development director's recommendation shall be presented. The mayor and city council shall cause the director's written recommendation to be made part of the record. Proponents of each proposed zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of 10 minutes for presentation of data evidence and opinion concerning the zoning decision. If all 10 minutes are not used, the proponents remaining time may be reserved for rebuttal. Opponents of each proposed zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of 10 minutes for presentation of data evidence and opinion concerning each zoning decision. The presentation times may not be reused, but may be extended by majority vote, provided they are expanded equally for proponents and opponents. Anyone wishing to speak must come to the microphone and give your name and address to the city clerk. There's also a card up there to fill out. Please get that to the city clerk as well. And do not speak unless you have the microphone and have been recognized. So with that, we'll call to order the public hearing for zoning matters. And the item up for discussion this evening is going to be 3589 PZ 2022 1031, which is 3509 Broad Street, its variance in waivers for the Shambly Tap and Market. And who's got that? John?
I've got that, thank you, Mayor. So we'll start off with the staff recommendation. Based on the analysis of the application and using the standards and criteria from chapter 280 and 300 of the Unified Development Ordinance, staff recommends the following action. Staff recommends approval of the following variances and waivers. Again, approval of most of these, denial of two, denial of variance five, which is variance in code section 260-95B, which is to allow additional wall signage on a multi-tenant building less than 200 feet in length. And number nine, variance in chapter four, table one, to allow tinted cement-based siding on a merchant title shop, style shop front building. So staff does recommend approval of most with denial of those two variants requests. This is the Shambly Tap and Market. They have come forward with the addresses 3509 and 3515 Broad Street. It's roughly .2 acres, and it's in the PUD zoning district. The proposed development is a reuse and renovation for a food hall, taproom, and retail market. The applicant proposes to renovate the building to create a taproom with supporting food hall and retail market hall. The interior partial demising wall between the two buildings will be demolished to create an open air space with approximately five stalls for food and retail sales. The applicant intends to meet substantially the points through lighting fixtures, landscape, and plumbing fixture upgrades. And the applicant proposes the following streetscape installments along Broad Street, 14-foot open space area, and they would pay the fee in lieu of installing the required streetscape, where the future Broad Street streetscape will be installed by the city. Variance is not required for that. The applicant proposes the following new signage. They propose approximately five-foot 10-inch tall by 16-foot 6-inch long root mounted sign for approximately 53 square feet stating Shambly Tap and Market. They also propose a projecting blade sign, which says Shambly Tap and Market on the front facade. The dimensions were not provided, but the rendering is included. And then a projecting blade sign located on the side of the building in facing Broad Street. And that sign would list the tenants, but the dimensions were not provided, but it is shown in the rendering. Again, their waiver request to reduce the five sustainability measure points to four points, to not meet the tree density requirement, to not install gum string closure. They would like to install a root sign and to allow additional wall signage. The applicant requests variances with the following regulation from the downtown Shambly Towns and PUD patterns book, and that is to decrease the allowable ceiling height, to reduce the penetration requirements, to reduce the supplemental zone from 65% to 0%, and to allow tinted cement-based siding on the merchant title, style shop front. The waiver request is to not install the 20% landscape supplemental zone. This is a picture of the building as it is now, facing Broad Street. The few buildings, I should say. The site. This is within the PUD district for the city. This is the current proposed streetscape plan. Again, this is the site with the two buildings. Facing north on Broad Street, and then again facing west.
What it looks like in high.
Not sure why we lost that. You can see the current property line, the open space. This is what they're proposing for the floor plan. And this is the architectural rendering. Again, on the floor plan, you see the five stalls for the seating, and then you see the root sign there.
The four factors.
So the three signs are, let's see if I can point you back. You have the root sign, you have a blade sign here, and you have a blade sign on the More detail. Building materials allowed for this building for shop front is unpainted and bridged, unpainted natural or manufactured cement. They are proposing tinted cement-based siding. That's, that's the end of the presentation.
Alrighty, is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this development this evening? Come on up to the mic, you'll tell us your name and address, how you're related to the project, and the councilman first, if you keep trying to remember your seat.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Hey, good afternoon, my name is David Hyman. My address is 3554 Regal Woods Drive at Inceup 30340. I am, oop, let me have a look. Is that better? It's all green light. There we go. Is that better? Alright. I am one of the two owners of Shambly Tap and Market. First off, thank you to council and mayor for being a great city to work with. We are very excited about bringing this opportunity to Shambly. As far as our requests, we think everything is of good nature to bring a good design to the building that we think will fit nicely within the, in the area, as well as not breaking any pocketbooks of the developers. But we're just, like I said, overly excited about the opportunity to come in and bring a really fun business to the area. Totally open to questions, you know, things from the community. We really do want this to be kind of a community-based anchored establishment in downtown. We think we have the ability to do something really fun with that. Just happy to be where we are today, and open to any questions concerned to the council and community.
Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of this development?
Maybe just more of a clarification, is this the time we do a presentation or something here?
This is the time.
This is being done.
Alright, so I'm John Ford, architect, on behalf of the client, also President Shambly, 3842 Captain Drive, Shambly. We gave a presentation to the city, if we want to flip over to that, it may not be necessary.
I do not have a presentation.
Okay, that's right, we gave everything, Andrew, that's fine. You showed most of the same material we would have shown. I just want to take a quick second and just talk maybe on behalf of the two items that were being recommended for denial. First being the cementitious siding. So primarily, our main driver for proposing that is the fact that it's all the existing condition, it's a lap siding currently on that portion of the building. So architecturally, what we're trying to do is choose a material that's compatible with the palette that is outlined for the PUD district, cementitious being one of them, just not necessarily for this particular building typology. But we're trying to be sensitive to the fact that the wall right now is not designed to support a masonry facade, not that it can't be, anything is possible with enough money and rate. But going back with the material, that's substantially similar in installation style to the material that's there today, but something that enhances the building appearance a little bit, longer lasting material than what's there today. And we are trying to articulate a little bit with the Wayne scope base, I'm actually pressing brakes if we're planning on keeping. And the only other one is with the blade sign, so obviously, the way the city presented it, we're allowed one sign for facade, so we're allowed one wall sign on this, based on the length of the building, that's allowed to be up to 100 square feet. We're proposing, obviously, the main root sign as the primary sign on that facade, it's approximately 50 square feet. The secondary sign that we're proposing is a little blade sign over the door, and what we're really intending that to be is more weight finding, keeping it small in stature, but it's really there to identify the entry point. The way the building is divided up, we're kind of taking two individual buildings right now that have two entry points, combining them into a single development, and so we're just trying to intuitively provide where that center point, entry point is for future patrons. Obviously, we're not trying to overly design that secondary sign in a way that would be distracting or anything of that nature, but simply to highlight that. But also, I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have, please.
Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of this project? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Your four? Kind, she's a border line.
I'm Samlin Tuskant Leslie, 1459 Thompsonburg Drive, 30345. I own property across the street, and I'm happy to see another adaptive reuse in downtown Shambly, where we're actually keeping buildings and improving them. I also support the Development Department's denial of the facade problem, because they held my feet to the fire line, and I think it's important, and we're all going to play by the PUD, that we all play the same PUD. But otherwise, I'm happy to see something like this come in downtown Shambly.
Try that one more time. Anybody else here wishing to speak in favor of this option? Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? Alright, that was pretty easy. This will come back up under Development Department, a little bit further down the agenda for council to make comments or ask questions, so if you guys want to stick around for this, just a minute. With that, we will move out of the public hearing, and I will call to order the city council work session. First item up on the agenda for this evening is the announcements and presentations for Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. So we have a big fancy proclamation here this evening, and I am, I'm excited to see this, and as I was sharing with some others earlier, Shambly has always recognized Hispanic Heritage Month, but we have never done an official proclamation. And so for me, it's a, it's a big deal, because it just shows that we continue to move in the right direction. I'm going to read this proclamation, and I'll tell you a little bit about why I feel that way. It is a proclamation celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month. National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated nationwide from September the 15th, which is today, through October the 15th each year. The observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover the entire month, which is celebrated today. Understanding that September the 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September the 16th and September the 18th respectively. Latinos are individuals that are descendants from Latin American countries and may speak a variety of different languages. Hispanics are individuals that speak Spanish and are descendants from Spanish-speaking countries. I'm sorry, I just have a little of these things. Alright, there you go. Latina is a gender neutral and non-binary term for people of Latin American descent, and we recognize that Latina identity also encompasses people of Black, African, Asian, Indigenous, and the queer communities. Recognizing that Hispanics total almost 42% of the city of Shambly population, with 43.4% of the population speaking Spanish. Understanding that Hispanic entrepreneurs play a vital role in our economy and workforce, and in that spirit, our city recognizes the unique contributions of the community during the annual Hispanic Heritage Month celebrations through the Latin American Chamber of Commerce, and support Latino businesses, a 501(c)(3)(6) organization. The City of Shambly encourages local partners, including community organizers, elected officials, business leaders, and business owners to celebrate the significant economic contributions Hispanic-owned businesses make, the jobs they help create, and the positive impact they bring to our community and beyond. The City of Shambly is joining communities across the country to celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month. I, Brian K. Monk, Mayor of the City of Shambly, do hereby proclaim September the 15th through October the 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in Shambly, and commend its observance to all citizens. So, as I just stated, we have 42% of our population in this city is of Hispanic origin, and that is a big deal. And we are glad to have each and every one of them here, and we are glad to have our Latino businesses here, and we appreciate everything that they bring to the community, the culture that they bring to the community. Joining us this evening is Liz Rodriguez, the Operations Manager from the Latin American Chamber of Commerce, and Liz, if you would come up and accept this plaque, I would be honored to give it.
Thank you.
Am I in the right? Nice.
Time, the number is dying, somebody up.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you. Thanks. On behalf of the Latin American Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank you, the mayor and the city council of the City of Shambly for this recognition, for the contribution of the Latino community, and his commitment for supporting all the Latino businesses. And I'm very proud and happy to be here with you guys. Thank you for this recognition, thanks.
Alrighty, understand action items this evening. First up, we have the city clerk, we have the approval of minutes from the city council public hearing work session, August the 11th. Anybody see anything that needs to be changed on that? We have the city council regular meeting from August the 16th. You good on that? Do me, you done with it? And you have it up, admittedly. Good job, Jerome. Alright, under city manager this evening, first up, we have the Marta Stormwater Pond Civil Design.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, we have for your consideration a contract or an amendment to the contract in Lake Warren for $242,500 to do the actual civil design of the park that is proposed as the current Marta Detention Pond. It will remain a detention area facility, but we are looking to add more park-like features, including a plaza, you know, a gazebo area, and some sitting areas. This is all passive, all passive park, there's no proposed programmed activities here, but it will continue to be a detention, stormwater detention area. So we're asking for consideration to approve these funds out of the Stormwater Pond.
That it?
That's it.
Questions from council?
Do we have a picture of that in our package?
I did not have the picture in the package. This is just a concept that was originally presented several months ago, but this is not, they will go through the full concept development, and then all the way through to civil design.
Any other questions from council?
Yes, one real quick. We can start with maybe the areas that we found in the contract that we're going through this, going through this. We had the, I believe there was nothing that was of worry, but do you have any concerns with that at any time?
Again, this is not for construction, this is only for design, and that includes the concept development of all this civil design.
Are there any input on this, on this housing? Or concerns with the, not the latter, but just that kind of, that?
I do not believe there's any public input. We've had several, they'll be taking the full input from previous plans that we've had. However, they will be bringing those concepts to council for consideration, so, prior to it going to this, to full design.
Then John asked if my agenda, that question was for the next project.
I don't agree with that. Next up is the Dresden Park Stream Bank Restoration Contract.
Thank you, Mayor. This project has been with us for a while. This is a grant that we received from Environmental Protection Division to do the restoration of the stream bank at Dresden Park. We have, of course, received that grant, started this project prior to COVID. COVID created some delays with some of our community engagement efforts. We ultimately did have a design that came in that was completed. Unfortunately, because of some of the supply chain issues, as well as the time that has passed, the total cost for this project was greatly exceeded what we had budgeted for our share. We went back to the drawing board with our design firm, they have made some changes to the design, which has taken it from more, not exactly sure how to share this, except to say that we are focusing on the stabilization of the stream bank at this point, and that is the primary goal, whereas the previous design had some more restoration elements to it. So at this time, we did put that back out to the, received, the, we received two bids, that Castro landscaping was the low bid, $860,000. We're asking the council approve that, authorize that with an amount not exceeding $900,000, because we do recognize there are some field issues that may raise the cost in terms of removal of some of the materials that are there. In addition to that, I would just point out, based on the grant that we originally applied for, we had budgeted $400,000, and the grant covered another $400,000. We've already spent about $300,000 of that on design and redesign and community engagement events, so this will be coming in over budget, and we will be taking those funds from the Stormwater Fund and pay for that. We do have the funds there, but I did want to point out that this is over budget in that regard.
If we did not make it forward, we would have to pay that back?
We would have to pay back any of the grants that we had received so far, which I'm not exactly sure what that amount is, but it is paying for half, up to $400,000.
Any questions from council?
One thing kind of stands out, it, it paragraph that says, since the city is not familiar with the word Castro landscaping, did not Ed Castro to Johnson here, or?
They did, and they did a good job for us there.
Yeah, so we are familiar, but it's not with the depth of their stream bank restoration.
Correct.
Okay. And... I don't understand the sentence of, or two sentences, so we'll read it to you, see if I can figure this out. This recommendation only includes the base bid for the Dresden Park Stream Bank stabilization. As the City of Shambly has indicated there are not many people with either of the ad alternatives, is that what you, that I'm quoting?
In the bid document, we had some ad alternatives, which are landscaping, and there were approximately four. And at this time, we chose to knock versus four additional add-ons that we had put forward. That's not to say that we won't ourselves, no, we haven't issued them, but we're not moving that whole project.
Okay, well, that's, that's pretty much covers my questions.
Any other questions? You good?
Your answer, Mike.
If council hasn't been over lately, I would encourage you to go over and take a look, it's just amazing.
Okay. I don't understand the sentence of, or two sentences. So we agreed to, see if I can figure this out. This recommendation only includes the base bid for the Dresden Park Stream Bank stabilization. As the City of Chambly has indicated there, not moving forward with either of the ad alternatives. Is that one that I'm quoting?
In the bid document, we had some ad alternatives to landscaping, and there were approximately four. And at this time, we chose to knock first to any of those four additional add-ons that we had put forward. That's not to say that we won't ourselves, no, we haven't issued anything, but we're not moving that project forward.
Okay, well, that's pretty much covered my question.
Any other questions? You good?
Your answer, Mike.
I would, if council hasn't been over lately, I would encourage you to go over and take a look. It's just amazing, the land that we are losing. I'm over there quite often. And just this past week, I was over there. And you can literally see that the parkland is just being swallowed up a little bit at the time. And it is our most heavily used park by far. So we, I know we have a lot of plans in the near future to spend some of our art of funds and do a lot of work over there. But if we don't stabilize the stream bank, we're not going to have a lot planned left to do work on. So I encourage you, if you have not been over there and just taken a look at how far the line has moved back, you can literally see it. As you stand there, you can see the dirt just falling. And so, appreciate the efforts on that. The next item up is the 2023 Employee Benefit Renewal. I guess that is at our Peachtree group.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That's a funny name. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jennifer Burke. I'm the Human Resources Director for the city. And I'm here tonight to join you to discuss 2023 employee benefits. Each year, we typically go through a benefit renewal process in which, you know, we come together on an annual basis and talk about benefit renewal for the following plan year. So we do that in conjunction with the budgeting process as well. Due to some substantial increases to benefits, unlike we've seen in the last five or seven years, as well as a pending comp study that we're doing with Find Great People. This renewal is slightly more complex than we've had in past years. And so staff is recommending that we break the renewal discussions into two meetings. And first, here in September, where we talk about plan options. And then the second, where we talk about cost share strategy for premium share with employees. Presenting renewal options tonight is Leah Schufert from Peachtree Benefit Group. So Leah, I will let you take the floor from here.
Thank you, Jennifer. And good evening, council members and mayor. My name's Leah Schufert. I'm from Peachtree Benefit Group. And, okay, perfect. The first thing on the agenda to talk about tonight is the 2023 Life and Disability Renewals. Currently, life and disability coverage for the City of Chambly is with Mutual of Omaha. This includes basic life and aid in the basic dependent life, voluntary life, voluntary, long-term disability, and employer-paid short-term disability. All of those besides the short-term disability are getting a 0% increase or not increased, not increasing at all. However, the short-term disability coverage is increasing 88%, which is a 28, approximately $28,000 increase for the 2023. That is due to high utilization in two to three months. And then the process goes on where there's communication for what documents are needed. And then employees will securely upload their documents, such as marriage certificates, mortgage letters, insurance, anything that the BMI audit services says they need to do this. And then it's completed, and the results are given to the City of Chambly to do with what you guys want to do with it. So the BMI audit services did not disenroll or cancel anybody's coverage. It just gave you the three goals of the audit. Any questions with this? So to kind of wrap it up, goals and recommendations. I think it is really important to talk about some of the goals for 2023, 2024, and even 2025. And number one, continuing healthcare premiums, increasing employee plan options, mitigating unnecessary plan spend, whether that's making sure dependents that are not eligible to be on the plan or not on the plan, but also mitigating plan spend, making sure that the claims aren't going up on that upward trend, trying to stabilize the costs and the claims, and stabilizing the prevalence of high-cost claimants. So by whatever means that we can do that, whether it's changing the plans, adding a consumer-driven health plan, better education, that's one of the goals as well. And then obviously, continuing to offer a competitive and benefit package for the employees and their families. To reach these goals, some of our recommendations and considerations. One is moving the ancillary coverages from Mutual of Omaha to United Healthcare. Bundling the dental vision with the medical carrier. Not just easier, vote for the employee and for the employer as administratively. And you also get the bundling discounts for that as well. We consider our, we recommend considering change of the benefit plan to increase deductible and out-of-pocket maximums to better reflect more of benchmarking. Offer, we want to recommend to consider offering a consumer-driven health plan as a third plan option. Offering a HSA contribution for the extended consumer-driven health plan to offset those employee out-of-pocket costs. Conducting a third-party dependent audit. And then to consider a spousal surcharge as well for the same reason that the dependent audit to tackle unnecessary plan spend for dependents and spouses. In conclusion, so Jennifer spoke to this at the very beginning. To allow sufficient time for benefit enrollment and data submission, we need to move forward at this council meeting with a decision on plan options and carrier. So benefit decisions for 2022 are selecting the carrier for medical, dental, vision, life, and disability, selecting the plan options and plan designs, and then determining whether to move forward with the dependent audit. That is for this council meeting for the September meeting. So for the October meeting, it is more on cost and budget considerations due to the survey and compensation study from SGP's that will be available to review for October. And so the October decision would be determining the contribution strategy. So that's what the employee versus employee is going to pay, and the premium cost share, determining whether to proceed with a spousal surcharge, and then determining the employer HSA contribution if applicable. That is my conclusion. I will take. Any questions?
Jennifer, this one's for you. When you spoke, you said that you wanted to go with the Cigna triple options, Consumer Driven Healthcare Plan. Is that correct?
So I would actually be keeping the two existing plans on the HSA, and then just adding a third option. That third option being a consumer-driven healthcare plan with an HSA that has an employer contribution to it.
Okay, that's what Cigna is still.
That is always Cigna. So I know John had some concerns about the prescription component of these healthcare plans. There would not be any impact to prescription coverage because it's all staying with Cigna. So even if you move from an existing plan to the consumer-driven health plan, you've already gone through that process, that pre-approval process of Cigna.
So the disruption, so what you're saying is we don't want a disruption regardless of the cost savings that's going with United would bring us?
Right. So when you look at the ancillary coverages and you look at short-term disability and life insurances, those are not, those are not plans that employees are interacting with on a daily basis. Those are plans that are looking at the types of claims they have, and then they're saying, we're going to pay this claim out based on what your condition is or not. They don't care about your doctor. So I don't see there being an issue in switching the ancillary coverages from Mutual of Omaha to United Healthcare. Again, those aren't highly-used plans. It shouldn't be. I mean, I know that it has been with short-term disability, but the coverage is going to be the same. It's based on the way the policy is designed, not who your doctor is.
And I would go back to something I said earlier, that Cigna has been very fair to us the last few years.
Yes.
We actually saw a decrease in one year, and we stayed flat one year. So this increase, that was really the first increase we've had in three years. It's significant. I won't say it isn't. But it is the first increase we've had.
Right. Well, and I also want to point out, if you look through these slides, if you're looking at the United Healthcare options that mirror what we currently have, the deductibles and the out-of-pocket maximums are actually significantly higher. And I'm just not quite comfortable with that, to be honest with you. I think that that's a huge change for our employees, and I'm not sure that we're ready to make that kind of a change.
Oh, it's specific for audit networks only?
Yeah. Well, even if you're looking at the 1,500, I think the out-of-pocket family, $9,000 and $18,000 is higher than our current.
For non-networks.
Yeah, for non-networks. That's right.
Well, that's why I asked about the, on the other, on the other screen, about the $500,000 is kind of the benchmark. Because we're going to be paying at least that.
Exactly.
If we stay with Cigna, then we're going to be paying, what, $600,000?
It depends on which, what plan. So if you make the triple, like the plan and design changes, the second, right one is $552,000 versus if you keep the two remaining plans and just add the consumer-driven, that's $630,000.
Well, I know last go-around, we decided that it was worth paying more to make folks' life a little less stressful. And as Councilman Mesa pointed out, and as you pointed out, we haven't changed in six years because, and that's been a conscious decision because we understand that changing carriers can be a huge deal to a lot of folks. When you got to change, when you love your doctor and you got to change your doctor because you're no longer in a network, it's a big deal. And as Councilman Mesa said, for folks that have certain types of medications, it's hard to make that switch. So I know we, this is not everybody's, it's not the most loving topic ever. I mean, it's not the most exciting thing to be talking about, you know, but it is, it is an extremely important thing to be talking about because folks have enough stress in their life. So I, I think we need to think about this a little bit over the weekend. And you guys need, you need to take action definitely on this on Tuesday, right?
We do. And the reason for that is that we have to let the insurance carriers know a certain amount of time in advance before we go through the open enrollment process. So we can make decisions this month on which benefit plan we want. So we'll know the total cost this month. And then next month, we can come back and say, what do we want to look at in terms of cost share with the employee on how we absorb some of this additional cost? We can also look at, do we want, if we're going to have that consumer-driven healthcare option, how much of a contribution do we want to make toward that HSA? And that would be a conversation we'd have to revisit each year that we continue to have a consumer-driven healthcare plan, which allows us to be a little bit more reactive to what's going on with claims or the economy, that sort of thing. But yes, these two kind of, I don't know what color that is. Red, orange, a burnt orange color. The recommendation that was in the action item is the 24.44% increase totaling $631,432.92. And again, that would be keeping the existing two plans exactly as they are, and then just adding the third consumer-driven healthcare plan.
Do we have any idea if we, what kind of consumer, right, that consumer, employer match we want with the HSA, is that represented in these numbers?
So we can pull some data from other local municipalities, but you would see something standard around $750,000 to $1,500 probably for an HSA contribution from an employer for this type of a plan.
Yeah.
So that would be on top of?
Yeah.
Because we're looking at outside of the $800,000.
Right. So that increases that.
And this is just, this is total premium. So it would include any employee cost share. So this again is, yeah, total, total premium. So the HSA contribution conversation can be, we wouldn't have the budget and the cost share conversation. But then at the same time, you can kind of toggle between how much should they pay out of their paycheck versus also the HSA contribution as well. But then again, these numbers are total premium.
Right.
The column, second column on the orange Cigna, and it's 21.4% increase. Whereas toward the United, it's 20.77% increase. So there's not a really significant, in my mind, increase in those two. And even the 19.79 is not that, that big a deal.
Yeah.
So we're talking about overall premiums, you know. It starts to get a little more significant over the year to where it's 0.4, what, 4%? But it, the disruption, when you compare the two, the first, those two columns are side by side. But that's a, I think it's a huge disruption. It's not getting much, not getting much, getting a lot of hang on whatever you want to call it. So I think for me, the decision of the two, the disruptions are the providers and drug therapies and all that are all going to, no matter which one of the two Cignas, they're going to stay the same.
Right.
It's just talking about premiums.
Right.
And...
Like their deductibles, their out-of-pocket maximums.
Which is something you have to do. That's just something you have to do. And that's the reality of the world, you know, sometimes we don't. Things might go wrong.
Right.
But, you know.
It can also, you know, obviously, when you have a slightly higher, with, you have to say that the whole plan options, the plan design changes. And this might be more, well, it is a conversation for this time as well. Obviously, the premium is lower for the higher deductibles. So it's a decision whether you want to slightly increase the member of cost share for deductibles and out-of-pocket, or you want to maybe slightly increase the member or employee's, excuse me, cost share for their premiums or their payroll costs. Because obviously, it's going to be a higher premium if you remain with the same two plans. Or you can change it slightly and the premium decreases. So it's really making that decision on kind of which lever you want to toggle with, whether it's adjusting the cost, having maybe a lower cost for employees with changing the deductible out-of-pocket slightly, or maybe slightly higher cost with no changes to the plan. So that's, I think, kind of the number-one decision or leverages to look at.
Just to piggyback off that, you typically see a lower employee premium on a consumer-driven healthcare plan because they have more out-of-pocket spending. So you lower the upfront cost that they pay every month out of their paycheck. So you can keep more money home, but then they have to pay it out a little bit on the back end. And then you can impact how much they're having to pay out on the back end through that HSA.
Yeah.
Okay? And what she was trying to say is with these two existing plans, if those were kept, you could look at those in comparison to that consumer-driven health plan and decide if you want one plan, like a consumer-driven healthcare plan, to cost a little bit less to employees, while the other two might cost a little bit more. We can have that discussion next month, but it's just something to consider in terms of how we absorb some of that cost increase.
Very good. Good conversation. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is the Service Delivery Strategy Resolution.
I'll put there. So as you guys know, DeKalb County is currently undergoing a unified, 2050 unified comprehensive plan update. And as a result of that and their efforts, we have to update our service delivery strategy. This is something that triggers all cities in DeKalb County to have to go through this process. One thing that is going to be different in this update to the service delivery strategy is the fire marshal services that we added in 2021. So as recall, last year, we took over doing life safety inspections from the Fire Marshal's office in DeKalb County to help get through our backlog that we were having with our businesses and our residents here. And so we continue to provide that service, and that is not going to be reflected in the service delivery strategy.
Anything else we're planning to change?
I was curious, you know, once upon a time, when we took, we took over the roads away from DeKalb County, and then I guess they put some energy on the county. Say, hey, we really want to get care of them. Or you don't have to do that more. Is there, does that ever come back up? Or is that something that they, or were they going to be effective? Because they were ineffective. That's why we decided to redo the water. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
I think so. That has not come up recently, to my knowledge, John. The only thing that, from their perspective, that's changed on our end with Fire Marshal's initiative, I'm going to bridge the topic to bridge.
They haven't compared, yes.
Do we have other municipalities that are having their own? DeKalb County that are having, can take care of roads?
Tucker actually has a referendum this year to take over roads from DeKalb. So they're going to...
It's trending.
It's trending.
The way, we, we've done enough, the other ways aren't really, just want to make sure there's about that.
What about some, can, can you?
I'm not sure what they do. I think they, I think they are doing their own roads, but I'm not sure. I'm not positive. I know Brookhaven is doing it, so I don't know about what he's hearing about it.
Any other questions? John, you have a security services contract?
Yeah. Um, so with the, the new city hall that should hopefully be coming online here in a few weeks, the revolving two weeks, maybe go over at city hall?
Two weeks.
Um, two weeks, yeah. Um, so, uh, you, you know, as you know, there's a lot more accessibility in that building, it's a lot more open in the lobby space. Um, and so, um, we wanted to explore some options for some additional security, just to keep the staff safe, the public safe, um, particularly in terms of that second floor. We do have access to people in the building, but this is just general monitoring of the facility on a regular basis. Um, we reached out, so we actually released an RFI request for information from security services companies. Um, we didn't get a significant amount of response, so we actually, um, looked at what the state had already approved. So, um, we went through a state procurement process, and we looked at, um, their vetted contractors. They use them for Department of Defense, and I believe one other state agency, um, has a security services contract. Um, and they have, uh, a few department providers. We, um, were in touch with them to see if they were interested in quoting us, um, under the state contract. Um, we did receive a, a quote from Allied Security Services, um, and we, I apologize, it will come, oh, there it is. Um, so they are proposing two unarmed guards for us, um, and then, um, one unarmed site supervisor. Every security service firm that we spoke to said that, in addition to the two, um, unarmed security guards, you'd also need a site supervisor, which is why there are three. Um, so those two unarmed, one would be sitting at that front, um, reception area. Uh, one would be towards the planning and development entry, and kind of wandering and just checking all the entrances. Um, and then there would be a supervisor, um, monitoring activities. Um, they would have access to our CCTV and be able to monitor, um, this grid cameras as well. Um, so the proposed total annual cost for that, for those, um, three, is a hundred and thirty-seven, four eighty-two, twenty-four per year, and that's under the Georgia State contract.
We did ask, uh, about just one person, and they all came back and said, minimum of, of three, three persons.
Yeah, I mean, they're experiencing the same thing that everybody else is experiencing right now with hiring people. So, um, you know, it's gotta be appealing for them from a business standpoint as well, and, um, you know, they can't just put one person on site anywhere anyway. So, um, that was kind of the, the gist that we got from them.
So it would be the same folks all the time then, right? We would have dedicated officers that understood, knew the building, knew the employees, knew that.
That's our understanding.
That's, yeah, and, and, I mean, as, as long as they're able to keep their employees, that's, that's our anticipation too, that, you know, that it would be the, the same consistent people every single day, full time. Um, and then they would also provide security services for the council meetings as well.
I did just hear Kristen take away your coffee shop question.
So, really, we wanted to put this in front of you for discussion purposes as well, because recognizing that that would be an added, a, a new thing for us, uh, at city hall. We don't currently have, you know, security at city hall. Right now, we do have a, a more, uh, you know, secure lobby area. And, uh, you know, we don't, we don't currently believe that we need that at the current city hall. Going into the new city hall with more open floor plan, um, there was a question, uh, is this something that we think we need? And do we wanna go forward with it? So, um, we've looked at it, uh, from the perspective of having someone there who can, uh, you know, really assess situations that may occur, uh, rather than having to call, you know, for someone. Uh, we've always, in the past, had the police department very close by. So that's a little different now too. But I don't wanna give the impression that we're putting this in front of you in a sense that we believe that we have to do this. Uh, we're putting this in front of council for consideration and for discussion. Uh, I do think it's something that, uh, makes sense. Uh, but I also, from, from our perspective, we look at it and say, three people is a lot. I mean, we, we did not anticipate that when we, you know, first started that process.
A little mention as well, just for, um, you know, some general understanding of the access control in the building. Um, it is, um, going to be access controlled in the elevator. Um, the second floor will have access control at the storefront, double doors, and out to the patio space on the second floor. So if you are, if a wandering person and you wanna go out there, you're not gonna be able to get into those spaces. Um, and the same would be the case in the third floor as well. You won't be able to get up to the, the, the city manager's, the council's office areas, and you're not gonna be able to get into, um, the additional office spaces that are on the third floor as well. So, on each floor, there is access control, it's just mostly kind of making sure we see and know what's, what the activity is in the open floor spaces.
How many, uh, entrances on the first floor, entrance, exits on the first floor do we have in our city hall?
Four. Well, actually, there's technically, um, five that you consider the, um, I'm sorry.
Stairwell.
Yeah, the stairwell access, that would be access only to employees, um, but technically five.
Okay.
But there'll be three open, in other words, the, the council chamber won't be open, uh, unlocked, I should say. There'll be three that'll be unlocked at all times.
And I won't mention to the back entrance of the building, um, with kind of the, the property line being the way, way it is right now. Um, it would only be accessible from the south part of the building. Um, and so I don't need to see a lot of people to come through that back door. Um, we could leave it locked if we wanted to, uh, do you?
So why did we, um, feel the need to secure our present city hall? The, why did we feel the need to have that secure separation between the front lobby and the hall? Because I, that's new, I would love to.
Well, we actually opened it up just before COVID. Uh, we established that side counter, and actually moved it back a little bit, moved the door back, and opened it up a little bit more. And then when COVID came, because we didn't have any kind of, uh, uh, bear cough barriers there, we just closed it up again. Uh, but, but initially, it was always just the one window, uh, in the front with the door to the side.
Yeah.
This is an annual contract?
Yeah.
Is it something to be part of the budget discussion that they're adding later?
City, city hall will be open by now, two weeks? That's what she said.
Fixing it for a while.
We, I mean, this, this would be if we wanted to do that next month, but, but it is something that we could take our time on and look at.
What, what other security, uh, arrangements do we have at city hall? Do we have metal detectors? Do we have, like, down here, do we have that? I'm not trying to, like, say that, I mean, I don't think any municipality, any school, any, any building that's ever had an active shooter went in that day thinking they were gonna have that. So I'm not trying to, you know, but I'm, it's the reality where we're at, so, um, you know, I don't, I don't think unarmed security guards are gonna, you know, are, are gonna do much either. But, I mean, we still need, uh, we need some type of security for the staff, and.
We do, I mean, right now, we just have access control on all of the rooms and, uh, areas. But in the lobby area, if someone's in the lobby area, we don't have, we don't have any, anything more than that.
I'm surprised we didn't bring metal detectors for the, for the, at least for the front entrance of council chambers, or, I mean, is that, is that not something we even thought of?
I'm not sure if it was, I think it was raised at some point, but we still need somebody to monitor the, the metal detectors, obviously. Um, but I don't, I think because we didn't, we don't use it currently really, or, um, well, I guess we do, for, for some reason. I guess that the thought just didn't really move forward because we were thinking about physical security people.
I think it's a product that were in courthouse, I wasn't before.
I mean, is that something we could think about as well? Is that something you could get pricing on?
Sure.
Uh, and, I mean, if council's open to that, I mean, I, I'd, I'd like to see us get pricing on that, just to.
Was that the, was the question?
Metal detectors for the, for the front entrance of city hall. I mean, if you're gonna have an unarmed security guard there, uh, it, again, I'm not, I'm not saying I don't like the idea of having a body. I think somebody needs to be there and, you know, be, uh, responsive in some way. And, I mean, because not everybody's gonna come in there to, to shoot somebody. Some, some bugs are gonna come in there because they're mad about something. And, you know, you, you have to have somebody in place to calm the situation, diffuse the situation. Uh, but I just, uh, you know, I'm, I'm really, I'm really surprised that we didn't think about metal detectors for the front door. It's just the, it's just the world we live in.
We, we haven't had those, and so that's not something that I think we did. But, I mean, we, we can price that, we will need to price it for all the doors, uh, we'll need to price it for the three entrances.
That's, that's gonna be a, uh, I hate to, frankly, to come by, but it's gonna be.
Well, it's not beautiful, but.
Not just aesthetically, if somebody has a damage, but that's, that's more fully just.
Do you have to have all three entrances open? I mean, you have to have, you have to have them be able to, folks have to be able to get out if there's a fire, but do folks have to be able to get in all three entrances?
Well, we, we designed it so that, you know, coming in from the parking lot to development, they have a separate entrance. So that, you know, people that are going directly to the development apartment can walk in straight off, straight off the parking lot and go to that area. And then those that wanna walk around the front, um, obviously can't. I mean, we could look at, uh, securing, uh, the fronts and, and back, and having the side be the primary entrance.
And I, I just, I just don't like the idea of having to go through a metal detector to get a building permit or, or whatever. It's just, it's, it's my model, I mean, I mean, I understand, but I mean, and now you, you wanted to have some access, better access control or winding the deal for the other parts of the building in some way, because, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff, the computers, the data systems, all that stuff. Or, I, I don't know, just, it's not a problem.
Is there an actual lobby in the development department entrance?
Yes.
So, then that could have a locking door that clients coming in would get invited through, just like what we've got now, but you.
Probably did you get on site, looking at this.
With the, with the receptionist, and she says, confirms your appointment, and then invites you through.
So currently, you come in, and, and we could go over there and look at this, but currently, if you're coming out from the side entrance, I'm not sure if you have visibility from the window.
You, you have visibility from, when you come in through the side entrance, you're coming in, and there is a reception area that is glassed off, and it is access control, you can't just walk up straight to an employee, there's some separation there.
Yeah.
And all the offices and, um, areas where employees are working are all access controlled. There's nobody just sitting out there unless they're just coming in, you know, and sitting in the lobby because they're waiting for somebody.
Okay.
Um, there is a huddle room, like, kind of type space, that is not access controlled, that somebody would meet with a developer in, or, or whatever the case may be, um, that is, you know, accessible from the lobby without access control, um, but that's it.
Well, I, I would just say this, at minimum, I'd like for PD to do a security assessment of the building and to give us feedback. To, like I said, nobody goes to work that day thinking they're gonna get shot, but people do. And I, I just wanna make sure it's a very safe environment, and I don't wanna, I'm not trying to scare anybody. I don't, I don't wanna make it, uh, you know, unfriendly for people to come, but I do want it safe for, for staff and, and visitors, so. Is that something we can?
That would be worthwhile.
All right. We are down to development department, and, uh, that would bring us back to the variance in labor for families that are in margin. Does council have any questions, comments, concerns?
I have a couple things to say, this is not necessarily for the applicants. Um, it's been recommended that, um, staff, that, by staff for approval, that be not meet tree density requirements. I think it would have been very helpful, to me personally, had that read, to not meet tree density requirements on site, but they are proposing a new, new, uh, because that, that makes it sound like we're just saying, oh, you know, it's a tree, bye. And later on, it comes out that they will, but I, I just think that would make that a lot more clear, that's number one. I don't quite understand, and this is some questions for probably the architect. Please, come on down.
On the way.
The, the drawing that you have of your, um.
Well, while she's at, maybe, uh, interrupt her, it's, what was, what's the content on the blade side, or the side of the building, or whatever that is? What is, what's, the, the side?
So, you know, it's hard to see, what it says on this rendering is restaurant, 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 retail. So, because the, we, because on the right side on the image, we're proposing the mini food hall, we, you know, we're proposing on the secondary side, that's allowed on the side elevation, it does have small identifiers of what the business's names are. So that, from the outside, right now, from the outside, it's not apparent that there is more than one business present on the period.
But have you taken, have you actually been on site and actually tested, uh, I mean, taken a look at where that placement is to, to see if it can even really be seen from where you're, I mean.
Yeah, so this is more of a sheer on elevation, the, the, the building is not ninety degrees, it's kind of, uh, skewed, if you will, on plan. Um, yes, you, you can't, uh, it's not readily apparent, walking or driving south on broad. It is pretty visible because of that angle and its relationship to the street coming from main downtown. But, you know, what we're anticipating is that this is primarily servicing people in the downtown area. There's a lot of residential development planned just north of our property, you know, behind our building. So, it, uh, we anticipate, you know, even people by city hall, so we think it's primarily to be used by people that know what's there. But say, for instance, of, you know, we know Rick Retail and Restaurant uses and succeed or fail fairly regularly. And, so, you know, those might change over time. So it's just something to identify for walking by, if someone hasn't seen it, to know what's going on.
I would say it's more of a pedestrian friendly, because you have the way of the driving and the traffic and.
That's right, it's meant for pedestrians, less for vehicles.
A lot of people are gonna be driving by and go, oh, chicken wings, right, they're gonna drive to it. But the pedestrian might see it, and they might.
Well, and to be clear, so that's also why the roof pub sign was primarily for, because the buildings don't have great visibility just from a, a functional standpoint for driving anyway, uh, right? And so, especially with the larger buildings planned around the site, we're just trying to make this thing more prominent, but we also don't want to foster the, the front of buildings left aside as well.
Is the, is the, what, the variance request, those are some violations, those could be a request. That is for, because they, the, the, the overall physical size of all sides, you know, quad, three sides, they're kind of in a three side.
Well, my understanding of the code is that, the way the, the staff report was written is that we're allowed one, and we're asking for three. I, what I understand is that we're allowed signs on the two facades, so the blade sign on the side is not an additional. We're just asking for the one additional blade over the entry fountain. And, and again, we, as I said before, we're trying to keep that small, it's, it's not meant to be, um, voiceless, if you will, it's just meant to be, uh, a wayfinding element.
I honestly don't like it being right over my head when I walk, it gets five doors, so if you could just move it to the side, that's a little bit, that's weird.
We would absolutely.
Over my head, that makes me nervous.
That's what I'm in the midst of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it is planned to be over ten, ten feet up, so if you're not a risk, it can hit, it will be, so something to call.
Um, and it's kind of gonna be hitting like the canopy of the capory diamond as well. So, uh, but, I'm, you know, that's his thing. So I'm looking at the, um, the, your, your property lines, and where your new grease trap is going, and all of that kind of stuff. So I'm looking at the, your property lines and where your new grease trap is going and all of that kind of stuff. The existing dumpster enclosure, that's not on your plan?
It is not. So.
Would you be using it?
Well, that was the reason for asking for the variance to not have one. We were apparently in the process of trying to communicate with the adjacent tenants since there is one already there in that courtyard. Tent to share that. Turns out it's not going to work out. We are planning to provide a dumpster enclosure.
Okay. And so you're actually widening your service drive, or widening the service drive?
That's correct. So we have an easement across our property for the adjacent tenant to use, right? The access drive is currently in fact, it starts primarily on our piece of property, goes lower at an angle.
Okay.
But because once you get up to the dumpster, that service drive is completely on their property. In order to be able to have deliveries for our businesses stay on our property, we're proposing to widen that. That's related to the tree request, by the way.
Yeah.
We have, all we're left with in terms of what's not hardscaped is the sliver of grass next to the building.
Yeah.
Isn't enough for a rezone or trees to properly grow.
But what if I got in there? Okay, so where is this dumpster and why do you not want to enclose it? Where is it?
No, we, there will be an enclosure in the plans and it will be adjacent to the existing dumpster.
Okay.
We were trying to not have to provide it if we didn't need to because there is one there. But it's not going to be enough capacity to support our business in there.
Okay. So there's not an issue with that. The only other thing that I want to clarify because I'm pretty sure I understand, the cementitious facade for your front.
Yeah.
You're choosing that because for you to put something more substantial up there, you don't have the strength on the underlayment of that.
Yes. So brick is a heavy material. We're allowed either brick or stone. Both are heavy. Both have to be supported by something. What that facade is currently designed for is a lighter weight facade material. We chose a lighter weight facade material that is in the allowed materials table, just not for our building. Again, it is technically possible to put it in there, but we would have to install a foundation that would weight and support that. You'd have to structurally support it over all the openings that you're adding. And, you know, as the design number is trying to be responsible for our minds and enhance the building budget, so within their budget.
You describe that as similar to like a, it's like a vertical grain, a vertical insulation, a white flag?
It is meant to look like a vertical butt jointed wood product.
It's not, because the description of the thing, it's kind of like stained concrete.
No, so it's cementitious, so it's, it's composed, so it's a mix of wood grain with the cementitious. Probably that's what makes it long lasting. But it's meant to have the appearance of a same.
That's certainly a premium material. At least in building materials, it's not, it's not cheap.
That's right. It's, well, it's certainly significantly cheaper than brick.
Right.
And doesn't require the same level of structural reinforcement as it. I would say it is a premium over like fiber based siding boards.
Right.
But not significantly. Our thought is more longevity. It doesn't rot. It doesn't require annual painting, but it's also cost effective.
It's kind of, it's kind of a counter looking table.
We thought it provided a nice contrast to the other building. It kind of brought out the color of the brick in our minds. Brown tent and the white tent, so.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Dave, can you come up, please?
Sure. Thank you.
So looking at your concept plan for our plan here, we have the food stalls and coffee, three food stalls and the retail. Do you guys plan on operating that yourselves or having different businesses come in to work in those stalls?
No, sir. The current plan, we will operate the bar as well as the coffee shop. And then we'll have three different businesses coming in. We've actually combined that retail into the other food stalls. So the current plan just has three food stalls, coffee shop, the bar. So we're going to operate the bar and the coffee shop.
Understood. Now, from a business license standpoint, they'll have to have individual license for each of those stalls?
Yes, they will.
Okay.
So they'll all go in and get their, their separate permitting when they go out through the building and all those things.
Okay. Got some questions?
Yep.
And that one grease trap is inside the stall?
Yes, ma'am.
It's gonna be tight for them.
We've got a little storage in the back.
And the food stalls have, they have seating or this is all going to be shared seating in this?
It's all going to be shared seating. We'll not have bar seating in food stalls. It's just a little tight.
What is the place now, the Rob Street?
Cross Street Market?
Yeah, something like that where you'll have a lot of communal seating for everybody. Some of those places do have bar seating at those stalls, but our building is just a little tight to allow that.
You already have all of your tenants lined up?
No, we're not at lease with anybody yet, but, you know, throw the conversation around. We're good. It's nothing. It's a little related. Try to have everything done over something, you know.
So I guess all the questions, that would be the food versus alcohol ratio. Is the one roof, does alcohol count towards one building or is it in each individual business?
Well, our, the only alcohol provider on the side will be the bar. So our food stalls will not be able to serve alcohol. That's just going to be our rules. As far as, you know, the legality of all that stuff, I think it's interpreted differently by the, I mean, things of that nature. But let's see your numbers.
The taproom ordinance.
Yeah.
As I said, though, if it becomes a restaurant, it can do that in the three different stalls to that point with the ratio of food to alcohol.
It has been interpreted that way in other establishments, yes.
What is the lounge? What is that?
So lounge is kind of a flex space in the back of the floor plan. We kind of just add some additional room. So our current design for it, it's going to seat anywhere from fourteen to twenty people. We'll do some banquet seating, have a TV in there and maybe a small sound system so it can be rented out for some small private events. Our cooler is behind it, so we'll likely put some taps in the wall to, you know, allow people to serve themselves back there. And, you know, just kind of a nice little flex space to be overflow seating or rent out on some small events and stuff like that.
Have you chosen which hall I'm going to support on Saturdays?
Well, my partner is a Gator. I think they have a bigger alumni association, so.
It's a Florida state alumni.
You just really messed up.
As long as it's not Alabama.
It's public here.
It's all tongue in cheek.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. All right. Under parks and recreation this evening, we have the Georgia Outdoor Spiritship Program Resolution.
Yes, good evening. We are asking for a motion to adopt the resolution to support Shambly's application for the Georgia Outdoor Spiritship Program grant. This is a reimbursement grant that requires a minimum match of twenty-five percent. It is recommended, however, that to attain points towards the grant, that the city match at least twenty-five point one percent. To get two points or to go up to a thirty-five percent match to get the six points. Funding for this project, should we be selected, would not be needed until the fall, summer, fall of twenty twenty-three. And that would go through twenty twenty-four, year of twenty twenty-four. So tonight, if you have any questions, that is one that I have, open it up for discussion with you. We need to know what percentage the city would like to make that match. And I have copies of resolutions to sign for next week, depending on what's decided by council tonight.
And is this specifically the Savoy Drive project?
The Savoy Drive, Nanticoop Creek Trail project. Yeah, millennial park there from North Peachtree Road to North Schallford Road.
Got you.
It is that project.
Just that?
Just that project.
You know, and this come up through Savoy Drive, right? Or have that little piece that you're like a T shape? Or we would have, that's just a county that comes up. It's a FEMA, is that FEMA? What is that?
It's a big question.
It's owned by the.
It's owned by the county, though.
We are seeking a maximum amount for this grant, which is three million dollars. We did apply for this grant back in twenty nineteen. I will say that we received no points because we only offered the twenty-five percent match, which is no points. When we were selected for this project, we did reach out to DNR to find out, you know, what are some questions that we might miss points on and what can we do better next time when we apply? This was one of those questions that was highlighted as something, a reason why we received zero points out of ten on this one. There were some other questions there. We've since have policies in place and things that we didn't have back then, that we can now skip points on those. But this is one question that, you know, definitely if we can go up that extra twenty-five point one, we'll at least get two points, which just makes sense. But it's up to you how much further you want to go. Really going in between twenty-five point two up to thirty-four point nine doesn't make any sense because it's still only two points. So like either go with the twenty-five point one or you go with thirty-five. Or you can go up to fifty percent. We can get all ten points.
But I think that if we receive this grant, is it real?
It is real, yes.
And we, it, that piece of property needs a lot of attention. It needs it now. So wait two years is okay, but. So I mean, I would be willing to support him, go, give him, give him as much money as he can.
So the, what's the total grant available, option available?
Three million dollars is the maximum amount.
Three million and if we do one point five, did we get three million or do we just get another one point five?
Meaning if you did fifty percent?
Yes.
And we got the ten points. So you would, we would put in a hundred, yes, one point five and they would match it at one point five for a total of three million.
Right.
But at thirty-five percent, it would be?
One million fifty thousand would be our match that we'd be putting in. We can count our grant writing services fees towards that as well. And we do have, Keep Shambly Beautiful has given us a partnership document where they're looking to donate so many hours of volunteer, volunteerism at a certain rate, which comes out to be almost like four thousand dollars of donation by them. All of that counts towards our match portion.
It's giving it, I've got a lot of cleanup with Keep Shambly Beautiful back there and the amount of bicycles and shopping carts and stuff that we pulled out of the creek and pines and stuff is amazing, badly amazing. And but you can also see that that area has so much potential, you know.
Worth it back there.
It's very, I mean, there's a lot of invasive species, a lot of stuff that's been dumped back there. And with all that would improve with Keep Shambly Beautiful's involvement and.
And it has low visibility from the roads back in there. And that's, that's just, that's not there, just not there.
So.
So we need a commitment on this now, but we're not running it forward until next year.
How's that budget process work? So you remarked the new conditions for the match? So if you pass the resolution, we're committing to whatever that percent is. And then just going into next year's budget, we would set aside.
If we won, or?
Well, we would set it aside. We won't know if we win.
We find out, if you make it to the second round, you basically are pretty much in. And the second round is, um, spring of twenty twenty-three, the pre applicants are notified if you're results and selected and invited to the second round. So pretty much at that point, if you made it to the second round, you're going to get it. Once you continue to submit everything that's required. And then we would find out by the summer of twenty twenty-three, we would be required to attend financial workshops for the grant. And then by fall, you would have, should have, you know, go ahead and start. It is a reimbursement grant, so we do have the money in front. So after we complete work or after work's completed, we then submit our receipts to them to get reimbursed the money back.
So we really wouldn't probably budget that much next year because, you know, design work in twenty-three, early twenty-four, construction work in twenty-four, twenty-five. So we'll string out the money, the budget of that next, so that's a split one point five and a kiddy in. Right.
Very good. We have a second read on the amendment for vacant property registry, which we'll need to take action on Tuesday. We have mayor and council liaisons this evening. We have a couple of things on this mark. First up, I have a resolution approving a sister city affiliation with Kavell, Ukraine. This is something I've already talked to all of you about, but we jumped on, Leslie and I jumped on the Zoom call with the mayor and some council folks from Kavell, Ukraine last week. As you know, most cities have a sister city network where they partner with cities from around the world to share, have practical exchanges in the fields of business, arts, culture, education, sports, tourism, that kind of stuff. And I just felt like that the city of Shambly has never had a sister city anywhere and has never participated in any outside cultural exchange with any other city. And I felt like with a lot of the things that are going on in the world, especially in Ukraine, what better way to start? And so this is a city of about seventy thousand. They are about twice our size, three times our size, but they are extremely, extremely excited to be able to participate in this exchange of knowledge. And I would just ask that you have a copy of the resolution in your files or in the package for Tuesday. I can also share that with you this evening, but I would ask for your support on that as we try to work that program. We did have a follow-up meeting at Emory University, opened up their continuing education center, which is at Century Center in one of the mid-sized, one of the mid-rise buildings. And there was pretty close to a hundred Ukrainian citizens that have been relocated to this area that showed up for that to ask for, you know, they're looking for support. They want to build a community center somewhere in metro Atlanta. And I would love to have something like that here in the city of Shambly. I noticed some of the other mayors were swearing in their police officers and other folks that were joining the city and looked at our code. And I do not have that ability to do that. It's performed by others and even our council members when they come on board are generally sworn in by the city attorney. So again, I reached out to you guys and asked for your opinion on that, but I would appreciate your support. On that, I've given me the ability to perform the oath of office for new council members, council staff, city board members, authority members, anything like that. Any questions on that? I mean, I got you. The third thing I have on here is the renaming of American Industrial Way to American Way. We've talked about this for a few years now. This is the, one of the roads that runs through downtown next to Southbound. And as you know, there's a lot of activity on that street, new buildings coming out of the ground. There'll be some new businesses. There's some remodeled buildings down there where there'll be new businesses. And I wanted to go ahead and get this done and out of the way before folks have to start changing their name after, the street name after they've already opened their businesses and printed all of their wares and all of that kind of stuff. So I would appreciate support on just removing the industrial moniker from the street name and renaming that street American Way. Any discussion on that? And fourth up is the renaming of Watkins Avenue to Interactive Way. Again, this is something that we've talked about for years. Watkins Avenue is a street that runs between the two campuses of the International, I mean, Interactive College of Technology. There is no other businesses on that street other than the college. And they do take up both sides of that road. They recently, a few years ago, closed that entire backside and made it into a huge parking lot for the college. College has been a strong supporter over the years. College has been a, a strong supporter over the years of our, uh, of our parks and recreation programs. They, they've done a lot for the city, and I would appreciate if we could go ahead and rename, uh, that, uh, that avenue to Interactive Way. And both of those on the, uh, both of those, the, the street renaming is just directing the staff to, to take, uh, take initiative to go ahead and make that happen. So is there any questions on that?
Is, well, I do have a question, and if you, John, is there anything that stands in the way? I mean, we've gotta ask, who, state government, federal government, Matt May or who, we have to ask?
How do you check this right now, John?
Uh, it's a process, um, we will have to go through it and, uh, uh, and, uh, we will have to talk to the county, the fire department, G I S, um, shouldn't involve the state, but we will have to talk to the county. We'll have to talk to the owners as well along there, uh, just to make sure there's no conflict with the county, and they'll have to provide proper time for people to make the change and move their stationery.
So by Tuesday, right? All right, uh, Council Mesa Gold Star, Council Rosen, you have, uh, one year to the consideration of funding for three art installations.
The Shambly Arts Commission has identified, my word, I got it wrong. The Shambly Art Commission has identified three locations that cry out for art. City Hall for a sculpture, Pier Strive at the open fence along the railroad track for a sculptural fence, and American Way at Peachtree, where there's already a base installed in anticipation of a sculpture. After consulting with Alain Buchanan of the Roswell Arts Fund about Roswell's public art program and stable artists whose work they have collected, it is estimated that for three works of a scale and quality needed, a budget of thirty to fifty thousand dollars per each would be necessary. I am proposing a budget for three works not to exceed a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and that our art commission initiate a commission for works dialogue with three select artists as opposed to opening up a bidding process, because otherwise it will take a few years to get anything done. Um, the most expensive artist would be David Landis, he is from Atlanta and is a well-known contemporary artist. A piece by him would be a great landmark work for a piece for City Hall, and would generate very positive local and national art buzz for the city. Jim Galucci from Greenville, South Carolina would be great for the Pier, the Pierce Peachtree Fence, as he does exceptional work, one, exceptional one-of-a-kind ironwork, and the third artist has yet to be identified. So my request is for an amount not to exceed a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So, any questions?
My question is, why is it not, why is the Arts Commission not bringing this forward? I mean, that, that what we passed them to do and brought them around to do, did that, their job?
If we did, but there have been, um, glitches.
Glitches, well, do we need to appoint new people because if they can't manage glitches?
Did they, they reached out to me, didn't they?
Mm-hmm. Yes, they reached out to me.
Then why didn't they come forward and ask for the same?
Well, actually, when the budget process was ever initiated in the first place, they asked for more money than they were given. And it has proven to be an issue, and they didn't feel that they had, uh, that it was in their, that they had the power to do this.
Do they have any funding in their corporate?
I don't know if there's very much of it left, they got forty-six thousand dollars.
They've, it's in Spanish for the long.
This would be a four-way hotel rental, do we know how much we have in hotel rentals? You're, you're gonna tell me, or you're gonna?
Yes, we do have.
Really?
That's why I didn't want to say.
Well, Wesley and I have to go into a further discussion.
Uh, we, you know, if you remember correctly, we finally have a, a, a grant writer, full-time, right? And one of the things that this grant writer is doing is pursuing, um, other funding, or, uh, pursuing funding for other projects and everything. But there has been a holdup for whatever reason within the structure of the art commission, and I wanted to jumpstart it. So I took it upon myself to bring this before council.
For me, could you, could you give me more information on these artists?
Absolutely.
Like some work they have done, something I can look at?
I can, and they are, um, the things are artists that the Roswell has used, so there are examples of their work. And of course, we don't have, I did, there's not one recommended for the third, but, um, I, I believe we can probably also look at their stable for that. Um, it's, it would be better to do it that way because our F Ps, number one, we put out our Qs or Ps, or whatever you wanna call them, Ps and Qs. And we have, the art commission has not gotten very much response, and the response that we've gotten has not been, um, world-class art. So, um, I really feel that this is, this is probably another way to go about getting some really, really good pieces for some very prominent artists.
I don't want to put it in the gas, in the gas tank, but I still want them driving the ship. That's what we, that's what we very likely do.
I'm, I'm an advocate, I'm not driving the ship.
So, um, if they wanna, you know, I just, I, I don't know exactly how procedurally it needs to work, but I, I, you know, it's not the money, uh, 'cause we have the money, and if there's the, the hotel motel tax, that money can only be spent on certain things.
Sure. I think, I think what it's, what is the problem with, with what's going on right now with the art commission is that those are all volunteers. We do not have a staff person that is charged with doing this. And therefore, they feel as volunteers that they are not really, this is not in their wheelblowers.
That's just another problem, some sort.
Well, I, I can, I can speak to some of this. The, when we went into budget process last year, one of the decisions that we made was to not spend money on a hotel motel fund because we had depleted it down to nothing. Um, so the fact that we have money in there now, it's kind of a reflection of that decision to, to kind of see where we were because coming out of COVID, we're not sure what to expect. So when the budget was done last year, and the art commission asked for funds, uh, you know, they received funding for three projects, roughly, about fifty thousand dollars. But, uh, there was not that large amount of funding out there, you know. At the time, we just weren't sure what was gonna happen with the hotel motel fund. So, um, going into next year's budget, I think the question is, for, for the council is what are you expecting from the Arts Commission? Uh, are you expecting to set aside funds and just let them kind of go forth and, and do what they want?
I thought that was the intention we originally had with them.
Okay.
I thought, maybe I'm wrong, but I wasn't in the space with my recollection.
So, so in the budget process next year, if that's the goal, then we would just essentially allocate funding to the commission and set it aside for them to, to move forward the projects. The other, the other approach is for the Arts Commission to essentially say, we wanna do these things, council will say yes, and then set aside the money. That was the way we approached it this first year.
Um, the second.
The second up.
Yeah.
Um, but that doesn't mean we can't change that.
And there wasn't a, a large pot of money appropriated in the first place.
Right.
So, so having depleted their budget already, it, this is an ask to, to restore what they, we should have given them in the first place, though we could.
Again, that's, that's it, I don't have any problem with the gas and the gas tank, but it seems like you've already got the projects, three projects already picked out or kind of doing their job for them, I don't know, they picked these, or?
No, they picked them.
Yeah, they're, they're, the coun, I mean, the Arts Commission has done, you know, have identified the project as, identified the artists.
Mm-hmm, and they, I, to just put it, the Art Commission is?
They're coming to council to say, hey, you fund this. I guess the question is, is the council going to be comfortable if a piece of art shows up on a sidewalk? Or at a future point, and I think we just, or are you going to want some heads up on that, or are you gonna want some approval of that? And I just wanna make sure that we're clear from a staff perspective as to what, we're okay allowing it forward versus what council wants to see.
What, what is our art's master plan? They came up with a series of recommendations that said how we, we should operate procedurally and, 'cause there were some concerns about the mural that happened on the mortar wall and how that got approved, and they said, and we were told one thing during that approval process. It turned out that, turns out, at least when they interviewed me, that you don't really have to go that way. There's plenty of submissions that can be done, and that's what happened with all our murals. We saw what option A, B, C, and E, and then we, we picked.
Right.
We, we, the Arts Commission, they not pick, make recommendations, and then we agreed or disagreed.
The Arts Commission made recommendations, and council said we liked them all, and, um.
And then we ended up getting extra murals because we liked them all, we didn't want to pick and choose.
But didn't we at one point also say that we were gonna leave out for the discretion of the city manager and not bring, bring this up before council?
I think that was talked about, we never changed it.
I, I think we could put together, I don't know, I don't think the process, if, if that is, if we're comfortable with that, I think we could put that process together. I think, um, the biggest thing I think the council needs to have some input on is the locations and just making sure that we're, I mean, right now, every location that has been mentioned is something we're in part, uh, okay, well, there was art planned for the corner of American Way and, uh, Peachtree Road, and there's a spot for it. The other two are new locations that haven't been previously discussed with council. So, um, I, you know, I believe that's a question of comfort level with the Arts Commission. Sam, are you identifying locations?
I mean, as a steward of taxpayer dollars, I mean, I don't want, I, I, I have a little bit of concern about just hoping just to get the money and having it not, being, having any input on it. The Arts Commission starts raising their own money and starts getting their own grants, and then I would probably say that's less, you know, having less input on those types of projects, but on taxpayer dollar, you know, like you said. I definitely don't wanna be a ma, micromanager, but I would like just to, like, you know, check the box, you know, like we did on these other murals. I mean, that's essentially what we did, that, I didn't feel like we did a whole lot in that process, and some things came out, you know, in that, during that process about, uh, where we shut it out like this, what we're thinking about doing, there was some input that was given, and some of those murals changed slightly by what was originally put in. You know, the, I'm about to say that the upper hand were, you know, the upper hands were white, and we decided to add one of the hands of color. So that's the way I remember it, and that was part of the public input process, they saw that, and they made the change, and it was easy. So, again, you know, it's, that's kind of why I'm hesitant just to say, you know, we need at least kind of matter, like you said, we just want stuff to show up and go, oh, that's nice, or what they should have done, they should have painted hands to this, probably getting a lack of do that. I mean, that's just, I don't think that's micromanaging art installations at all, but it is kind of like checking it just before it gets installed, 'cause then it's kind of a big problem, once it's installed, and you have to come back and change it and that kind of stuff.
I would like.
And that was made, that was made in a recommendation by the Arts Council, mainly, uh, the Art Council of the, uh, when they had the Arts Master Plan. I remember that, at least that's what they talked about being, when they, when they, when they, when they, and it's a very technical.
So we need a policy, first, that's consistent, and then we need, I mean, I, I don't wanna ever be the guy that selects a piece of art, but I do want to, uh, I do want to play a role in that process to, like you said, I don't wanna drive by one day and see something on the corner that I had no idea that was, if you're coming, so, and I don't, I, I'm.
That's not, that's not this proposal.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying, but I don't, I don't know what the, I, I get the piece of art by southbound and, uh, and City Hall. I don't know what the, the, the Pier Strive, I know that piece of fence is missing, but I don't, I don't think I've ever been part of any discussion about what was going up there to replace that piece of fence, 'cause the last conversations you and I had was, hey, John, let's, let's get a new fence up there. So, I mean, I'm having conversations with John about getting a new fence put up there, and the Art Commission is thinking about something completely different that I'm not even aware of. So I just wanna make sure we all stay on the same page and not, you know, not do something that will, yeah, so I wanna be a part of the discussion, but I don't wanna be the guy that chooses any art. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair, and, and if, how do you go about commissioning a piece, number one, you like the work that the artist says. Now, that, you know, none of these artists' works have been presented to anybody, well, me, but, um, else on this council, that's number one. But we need to commission an artist, um, we go by the work that they do and by their reputation in world art, and then they make a proposal, they bring you essentially a, not a mock-up, but just the same thing that, that development people do, they bring you, this is what this new building is gonna look like, is that, is that my proposal?
And we didn't, uh, come, what I remember about the murals, we paid them for a draft, we didn't just say, they could, everybody creates stuff for free, take your time and bet that.
Well, we paid the guidelines on what we wanted.
But they also paid the money, we paid them money for a draft version of what?
A mock-up, yeah.
A mock-up, so they did, so they, and, and that's how the response gets big, as you say, you're not just submitting stuff and then having it, you know, and then having guessing what it's gonna look like and whatever, I mean, this is, that's what happened with the mural on the mortar wall. We saw examples of what he did in the past, and I don't know if anybody ever saw, drafted what it was gonna look like.
Sheep.
Sheep, uh, and then it showed up, and we all thought, well, is it done? And they said, yeah, it's done, and so it didn't look finished, and I don't think that, that what we got, it looked like anything that they had done in the past. This is my opinion.
The artist, the, mm.
The mortar wall, the mortar wall behind the gap.
Not, not an art installation, the wall down by Peachtree.
Oh, oh.
So, I, I, again, that's why I, I was completely comfortable with the other murals that we had, the one that's out here, the one that's at City Hall, and the one that's on, uh, where, is that, is that part of that process?
Uh, I think it's.
Enter, enter, oh, uh, yeah, uh, what was it, the fourth one?
Well, the fourth one.
It's on City Hall?
Is.
City Hall.
The fourth one, the, the discussion is putting it on a wall, and we're in discussions with a wall.
So we only have three at the station, so.
We only have three of the four, I believe.
The one that's on the side of, by Teo Lovo, and that was one of, one of the pieces we thought, you know, it's the story.
That was, that was a whole different discussion, that was a long.
Yeah, it's a.
Okay.
That was, that was when we.
It's hard to, I, I was surprised, 'cause I didn't know it was coming, I'd never seen it before, never, and it, it's nothing wrong with it necessarily, you know, it's all private, but I just.
But that was put before the Art Commission, and they, they approved it, which is what we said, we wanted, what we wanted our commission to do.
But we didn't pay for it.
We paid for it, so that, that was a little, uh, different because original, the original plan for that area was that we would put a, uh, we didn't, didn't get in touch with the owner of the building, we were going to have a, uh, like a wall, uh, it was gonna be an art installation that was more, uh, like a sculpture wall or something to that effect. That the, we were finally able to get in touch with the owner of the building, and the owner said, actually, he was in favor of this, of a mural, that he had a artist that he worked with that he wanted to do it. And so that artist provided some samples, but then went through the Arts Commission. But the city did pay for that mural, uh, on that, on that.
Well, I trust the Art Commission, I mean, we got, we got. Well, I trust the Art Commission. I mean, we got, we got, we got, we chose the folks we wanted to serve because of what they brought to the table. We've got murals going up all over the city and so far in the middle, Mark Ford's dogs playing poker. So, so we're doing good.
I tried.
Wait a minute, we're not getting one of those.
So I trust other people's judgment when it comes to art, but I don't, I wanna be part of the conversation of, of where, where it's at, location, and what we're doing, just so that we're not, so I'm not asking you to do something else and they're asking, like I said, about the fence. I, I said to John, I said, put the fence back up before somebody gets on the track, gets hurt.
Uh huh.
And, you know, this is.
Uh huh. And, and I went to John and said, you know, that would be a perfect place. And I showed him some, I showed him, I showed him some different, um, ironwork fences that have been done that are, um, some one out in Toll House, California, and some that are on some farm, farms that have all, bunch of wheels, all welded together and stuff like that. I also showed you guys, I know I showed you that sculpture, um, that I saw, and I still wanna picture of the, the two eyes looking. Um, which is, that's what I would have liked to have seen, although I think that the mural that was on, on the Edward Williams Building is, um, gorgeous. And it's amazing how it has changed the personality of that spot. It's incredible to me. Um, so the Art Commission will handle going to these artists and, and picking them out. But they couldn't very well do it without, they can very well do it without having an idea of how much money they can offer. Because you don't go to an artist and say, what can you do for twenty-five dollars? Or what can you do for fifty? But what if I had sixty dollars, what could you do? Show me three examples. Um, that's one thing. Um, another, uh, so that's part of it. So this is, this is giving them the permission to go and do what we wanted them to do. Um, we did put in a base for a sculpture next to Southbound. Um, I think we talked a little bit about, uh, a sculpture at City Hall of some kind. It may not be outside, it might have to be inside on one of the walls and might not have a place for it. As far as the, 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 um, fence at the, at the railroad, I've probably said something to all of you about it at one time or another. Wouldn't that be cool to have a piece of art there? So that's not, that's not something that hasn't been, ever been, uh, brought up. It's just that what happens is that the commission just didn't get any money. And I understand why. I have not complained about that, but there's, to wait for, um, grants and things like that, we're looking at three, four, five years before we get anything out of the ground. And we've already grown old. And I think that this process, and I think that the artists, that, um, that these two people have been thirdly vetted by Roswell, Roswell has pieces that they've done, has purchased pieces that they've done. Um, that's not to say that you won't, it will not be brought before you when there's, um, if they know that they have the money, the commission will do a presentation and show you what sort of work it is that these people did.
I would certainly be in favor of funding, like I said, if it, if that was a promotion, it would maybe ought to be, give the Arts Council money. But that's, I, I don't wanna really kind of get into the leads as far as like, who, what, where. But, you know, I don't know that that can still come from them. Even if, you know, somebody's already talked about it or whatever, but at least it's gonna come from them. This is, it's gotta do with the money.
Uh huh.
I got no problem with, like I said.
So he wants a presentation from the Arts Commission.
After we give the budget.
After you, that, you know what? That's what I was gonna say.
All right, thank you, man. All right, we are up to, uh, citizen comment. And of course, since you are all here, I'm gonna put everybody on the spot. All of my one-on-one bugs, if y'all will, take a minute and come up and introduce yourselves. Tell us, tell us who you are, what neighborhood you live in, and why you work with Shambray One-on-One. Can you do that for me? Come on, y'all, come on, come on.
It was a three on, three, like three years ago.
Come on, don't, don't be scared. No, come up together and you come up as a group.
Yeah.
Come on. We just wanna know, we just wanna know who you are.
That's okay.
So my name is Richa Bryant, and I actually am the supervisor for Huntington Station apartments. And then, y'all, a few years ago, from Texas, I'm a real supervisor there. Moved to Huntington Station, if any of y'all are familiar with it, and needed a lot of work. And our owners were not getting, you know, what they needed before. So, um, came in, had been working really close with Shambray PDD. Um, I actually got an award in June for recognition from the city, which just made my heart sing. Um, and I saw this come up on my Facebook. I thought it would be really good to be more of a part. I actually don't live in Shambray any longer. I live in Lawrenceville. Um, was not able to purchase. It's a tough market out there. But I feel like this is a home. I'm here so much. My residents live here. I really wanna be a part of this, so this feels like home to me. So really fascinating to watch everything tonight. Thank you so much.
I'm Eli Arnold. Um, I'm living in Variations, uh, condo complex. I do for Clairemont. I'm a librarian over at Oglethorpe. So, um, my partner and I, we've lived in Shambray since twenty sixteen. So we're excited to get more involved and learn more and more about the city. So it's been really eye-opening, the, uh, kind of see behind the scenes so far, so really excited to participate.
We always do the Variations for the Ice cream social, I don't know. Well.
Which we appreciate. Uh, I'm John Malahi. Uh, I also live in Variations, obviously. And, um, yeah, I'm just an add that I, I signed up for those two years ago. And then had to back out for scheduling reasons. So I was kind of looking forward to it, and it was not happening for a couple of years. And so I actually did sign up.
Well, I'm glad we didn't say when he turned you down.
The background check? I fix something.
I'm Shannon Bowler, and I signed up just because I'm nosy and I just wanted to. Uh, I'm from Halle McGrath. Um, been in Shambray for twenty-two years, and I love it. Get my friends who live in different parts of the city to come all the time and experience downtown shopping and eating. And everybody I bring in loves, you know, we just like that too, so that's it. I live near Huntley Hills. I used to live right here too, but I live in a little neighborhood, Rosewoods, which is adjacent.
I'm Emily Robertson. I live in Variations. You guys were late. I, and this is my second go around in Shambray One-on-One. I was in Jimmy's last. Um, lots changed, and we'll catch up. And tonight has been very entertaining.
Insurance talks entertained? Insurance talk.
No, the insurance talk was not. Yeah, that was like, kill me now, I like to think. I need to pay my insurance for me, actually. But the art discussion was perfect.
Hello, uh, research meeting. I also live in the Variations. Um, I'm here because I'm a big transatlantic urbanism advocate. Uh, I'm hoping, just to make sure I know it's throughout my community and there's a place I can get more in love.
Okay, you're great.
Hi, my name is Yong Chi Chan. I came here in nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety-three, and I'm a teacher. When I finished my doctorate degree, I go to Taiwan teaching at Taiwan University. And, uh, I like the people I work with, because many, many of the Chinese based on the Korean and this one. Also, I find the Asian, pretty, but now it's very dumb. So sorry. And the other thing, I like the, uh, Japanese station, the Chinese culture. Yeah, over there, but now it's very dumb. So I, I think, you know, the city hall went to, you know, renew the, the display is very important for the international village, uh, net. Uh, now, now, I teach in Taiwan, I'm here, my department. But now I moved, I moved to Shambray, stay with my family. And since I'm an American citizen, I see, I see leaders who then some here, and so you're not.
Hello, I'm Robin Murphy. Um, this is my husband, Rick. We live in Sexton Woods. We've lived there about fifteen years. Uh, I had signed up for Shambray One-on-One right of following COVID hit. Somebody stopped the program. So I've just been involved with three or four of them. It was great. We were really on the roll. Was one of Eric, actually was the mayor. And stopped and was looking forward to when it resumed. So, uh, thank goodness, they would accept me, maybe to Shambray One-on-One as well. And Mok Tuen, and, uh, really love the way the city's developing. It's very exciting. Um, I'm actually, I won't go anywhere, but I'm actually living in Shambray twice. So I've lived here before, uh, I got married to Rick, so this is my second time. But I really love also the discussion around the Art Commission. I think art makes a city, uh, it gives it flavor, it gives it personality, and I am all for it, so please vote for that.
Thank you. I'm Rick Murphy, what she said. She would love to be on the Art Commission. However, that happens. May it happen. Well, of course, again, didn't mean to put anybody on the spot, but we are, I mean, we are just absolutely thrilled to have you all here with us this evening and to have you going through this process. And it's, uh, it is a big deal to give up so much of your time. Time is something that is very valuable to all of us these days. And you can take the time to come every week and go through these classes and learn and educate yourself on the city and the, and the inner workings. Uh, you know, it, it, it doesn't go unnoticed, and we do appreciate that you guys are taking the time, uh, to be with us. So here's some new folks and some folks that's been here for a long time. And, uh, I'm sure, I'm hoping you're, you're, you're learning a lot in the classes. And, uh, and once, once we wrap this up and you go through the graduation, I'll ask you again to tell me what was your favorite class? Because everybody always has a, a class that was their favorite, so be expecting that question at your graduation. What was your favorite class and why? And, uh, if, uh, you know, we got some, you have some great council members up here. Like I said, I think everybody's gone through this process at one time or another. Uh, never hesitate to, never hesitate to reach out to any of us if we can help you. Uh, if we can help you going through the program, if we can help you after the program, if we can help you in your neighborhoods. Never hesitate to reach out to any one of us. We're always here for you. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it. Uh, do we, sorry, do we have any other citizens in the audience that wanted to, uh, comment this evening? Anybody else that was here to, uh, to say anything to us this evening at three minutes? Nobody? All right, so I do believe we have an executive session this evening, John?
We do for personal matters.
Very good. So we have an executive session for personal matters. So if somebody would make a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session to discuss personal matters.
A motion in second on the fair. All right, so we will need to exit out for a few minutes. We'll come back at some point. Uh, if you wanna stick around, please do. If not, uh, it was good to see everybody.